This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Hall Regular Meeting. It's Monday, August 14th. This committee of the Hall Meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format. Public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public comment via the remote meeting access. Deputy Clerk Gravetti, can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry? Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the time for citizens' comments, and Deputy Clerk, has there been any requests turned in? During a committee of the Hall Meeting, you can speak now during citizens' comments, or you can wait until the topic that you may be wanting to comment on will come up. Okay, official and staff comments. Mayor?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Alderman?
Alderman Kruckenberg?
This may seem a little late, but I wanted to, I was reminded this past Sunday as I attended the wrap-up meeting for the Friends of the Fourth Committee Meeting, and they get together and review all of the events of the Fourth of July, the parade and everything, and they evaluated and trying to determine ways to make the event even better than it has been in the past. And I just wanted to recognize them and thank the Friends of the Fourth for their dedication, their continuing hard work to give the city such a wonderful event such as the Fourth of July.
Thank you. Any other Aldermen? A city administrator?
No comments. Thank you.
Is there anyone on staff that has any comments? Treasure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will begin the business of the meeting. Our first topic is consideration of, I probably should read these letters. I have to go back to do it. Yeah. Oslad Grant Resolution for Cerny Park. I'm calling on Public Works Director Phil Kukler to introduce this topic.
Thank you, and good evening. The Cerny Park Playground and Shelter are long overdue for some significant repairs and replacements. Staff is currently seeking a grant to help pay for these replacements and repairs. We've engaged Hitchcock Design Group to help with the preparation of the grant application. Hitchcock has a high rate of success in helping municipalities obtain those grant funds over the years, so we're confident they're going to help us. City has a long-term goal of kind of getting itself out of the park business. I mean, we've in recent years gotten rid of, I shouldn't say gotten rid of, transferred Plum Path Park to the Park District. We're currently working through transferring Harding Field to the Park District, and Cerny Park is no different. It's more complex, but we're going to be working later this year with the Park District on an IGA to help facilitate the transfer of that park to the Park District as well. The city owns the park right now, though, so we are the applicant on the grant application, and the Park District is providing letter of support as well as their expertise to help us and Hitchcock with the conceptual plans that are going into the grant application. City Park Task Force has provided some input on this as well as the public. There was a public meeting on July 20th where the presentation was made by Hitchcock, and we received public comments from the people who were present. I believe there's been additional public comments or availability for it at the Park District. I think there's a, one of the boards is up in the lower level of the Park District right now, and I think there's some stuff up on that online as well. Tim Reinbold from the Park District is here tonight. Got Hitchcock Design Group is going to be providing a presentation on the grant and what's included in it, as well as the requirements, and Bridget Dietrich from Hitchcock is going to do the presentation. Bridget, Tim, and I will be available at the end of the presentation for any questions you might have.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for having us out here tonight. And thank you, Phil, for that intro. So, we're here to talk about an open space land acquisition and development grant offered through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for Cerny Park. Phil already hit on some of the major topics, but really what we'll be going through tonight is a little bit of background information about the grant program for those who may not be familiar with it already, a quick overview of the concept plan, including what we're envisioning for Phase One, which would be that grant application, a review of the high-level costs that would be submitted as part of the grant, talking about the schedule, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments. You're also more than welcome, as we move through the slides, to interrupt me if you have any questions come up at the time. So, just so, just to give you a little background on the grant, the Oslad Program has been offered for many years on a fairly regular annual basis, for the most part. It is a 50-50 match program, meaning that up to $600,000 that a local agency contributes, the state will provide that equal funding back for a match amount of $1.2 million. So, basically, half your park is free, which we think is a pretty great deal. There is various evaluation criteria set forward that we'll touch on very briefly here and call out a little bit as we go through, but different evaluations for providing new recreation amenities, replacing amenities that are perhaps beyond their useful life or in poor condition due to just normal wear and tear, rather than maintenance deference or lack of upkeep, which there certainly are at Cerny Park just due to age alone. There's also environmental considerations regarding plantings, native systems. Cerny Park's already an excellent location with the naturalized detention basin and native berm. So, really, the focus of this grant is for that recreation funding, but making sure we're still calling out your existing good work for those elements as well as part of that evaluation criteria. So, with that, we're going to just jump right in, and we'll call out a few more. So, just as a refresher, we've got just the park as it is on the screen. North is up with Forest View Drive being the north boundary of the park, and we have the existing large shelter and restroom building that's starting to show its age with some deterioration of the columns, the posts, the roofing, as well as our three small shelters along the edge of the ballfield that are in a very similar age and condition, just in need of a little love and refresh. There is the existing ballfield over along the east side of the park, the existing playground, which is definitely starting to show its age as well, but does have some really nice elements with that ramp system that goes off the side to provide some added accessibility. And then there is the basketball court in the northwest corner, which we understand has recently been repaved but has not been color-coded yet. And then finally, along the south edge of the park, within the walking loop, is the sand volleyball and the horseshoe, as well as the waterfight poles, which I have been thoroughly informed about, and sounds like a really, really fun event. But the sand volleyball specifically and the horseshoes, we've heard between different conversations with Park District staff, city staff, a few of the board members from each agency who were kind enough to join us at our community meeting, and the community themselves, that both of those amenities are maybe not being fully utilized, and might be time to do some replacement and some adjustment to make them a little bit more desirable and bring some vibrancy back to the park. So with that, we will jump into our plan. We looked at the entire park holistically with a master plan, as well as calling out some Phase One improvements. I'll start with Phase One, which is what we envisioned doing the Oslad Grant, and then talk about the larger vision for the park and how that might turn into another future grant somewhere down the road. This is also a good reminder for me to mention that while these elements are, any of these elements will be submitted, and if they are funded by the IDNR, they are expected to be provided. However, what they look like, where they are, their final size, is still going to be changeable. So, it's really just here to talk tonight about committing to the items that you want to commit to providing at Cerny Park for the duration of the grant and beyond. So with that, for Phase One, we're really envisioning trying to hit about four key recreation elements, being making those repairs to that main shelter, making repairs to the posts, and then doing an entirely new roof, knowing that that is just really in need of some renovation given the age of the shelter. I don't believe it's had any replacement since the initial park development, so it's getting to be what the IDNR considers past its useful life. We're also looking at some new playground renovations. The existing playground is really nice, but it's also a little dated, and it's a very, takes up a very large space and is very low. So you'll notice we're actually bringing the container size down. We'll talk a little bit more about why when we talk about Phase Two, but the idea is to replace this with modern equipment that can do a much better job, meaning full inclusivity, not just mobility, using the existing ramp up that can then connect to the existing structure, but also providing new amenities that can do, that can incorporate other elements beyond just physical play, including collaborative play, imaginative play, and including elements that include sensory, educational, and even some areas of refuge, as well as looking for opportunities on that inclusivity line to include elements like various swing seats that can be used by any and all users regardless of ability, and all-inclusive spinners that can allow mobility devices right on the equipment without having to transfer out. And of course, we're looking at a new surface because this will be an inclusive and a big community draw for the playground, looking for a unit surface like a poured-in-place rubber surface that would then allow us to utilize the hill on the side of that ramp and put in a little bit of extra play with the idea of some scrambles or some slides that are actually built into the hillside and are really, really popular with the kids. To the side of that, we are looking at the old sand volleyball court, and since we're hearing that that's just not gaining a lot of use, and there's also already courts elsewhere in the city, looking to replace those with what is probably the single most in-demand and expanding amenity in the state, maybe in the country right now with two pickleball courts. These would be dedicated courts side by side with a little bit of separation fence just for some ball control, and would really expand the ability to serve the community. I also know in the Parks and, the Park District Master Plan, there is a set goal of providing basically for the population three courts, which would bring you right up to that set goal and provide the appropriate number of courts across the community. To the side of that, we also propose renovating the southernmost existing shelter, just like the main shelter, making repairs to the posts, providing a new roof, but also providing an accessible sidewalk and paving under that, so it's a little bit easier to get into. And finally, in the northwest corner, going ahead and just adding that color coding and striping back onto the basketball court, so that it becomes a lot more playable and more functional. And that's really what we're looking at for Phase One. We'll jump into the costs, but just to hit on the other elements you see on screen, the other things that we're considering for future use and what we hope might be a Phase Two in the future would be to make some renovations to the ballfield, improving the line fencing, the backstops, and adding some shade canopies over the dugouts and spectator areas, renovating those remaining two shelters along the side. You can see the northern one stays in place, but we actually think that we might be able to pick up the middle one and move that over by the existing horseshoe area, give it a little bit more function, provide a secondary seating area to supervise the playground as well as the horseshoe area. And because we're hearing about a kind of a change in different types of amenities, we're proposing to keep two horseshoes in place. Those can certainly be supplemented in high-need events like that Fourth of July festival, but providing a variety of new lawn and backyard-style games like the Bring Your Own Bags kits and bocce ball, which you see along the line of the fence. The other big item that we're looking at here is a splash pad, and I know there's probably going to be a few questions about that, but that is the reason we are exploring shrinking the overall playground container, is to provide that new water amenity, which is another immensely popular and growing trend, and something that we also heard recently in the Park District's community survey, that there is a definite interest in from the community. With that, there are other items throughout the whole project. As different items are implemented, of course, we would recommend that all paths be up to ADA compliance, and eventually complete the trail system and make sure that all of those paths are still performing well. Oh, I keep forgetting Phase One, also just very small, but replacing the poles for the waterfight event as well, since those are starting to not hold up as well, just due to age. So with that, we did provide a few images. Again, these are just to react to and for inspiration, certainly not the final direction. There is room to adjust before final groundbreaking. One of the requirements for the grant is to submit a playground plan. So, one of our playground vendors did put together this preliminary idea that really showcases the idea of accessibility and inclusivity with different ramps going up the structure, different elements that you can come right up to, items that are low in ground level that will be very suitable for kids who are just starting out or who are younger, and then very tall elements that will provide a thrill for those older age groups. You can see quite a few bays of swings, as well as some more sensory items with the idea of musical play. The other item that you don't see here that came a little late is the idea of a zip line. So, we have talked about that and can definitely fit it in with the container and the budget, so that is definitely on the table. That remains of interest to the community when we get to, ready to build this park. We also provided just some examples of what these might look like. There's that zip line element, since we couldn't show it to you as part of the playground concept. Just the pickleball striping with the idea of that fence in the middle for ball control, our nice new color coating for that basketball court to improve play, the horseshoes to remain, the idea of those bag toss games. And then we also mentioned bocce ball, which it looks like did not make it onto our slide, but that is definitely something that we are considering for future phase, as well as other improvements like those baseball dugouts, and of course, the idea of some sort of splash pad in the future. So with that, probably what you all want to, really want to know is how much is this going to cost you? So, just like everything else, these numbers are preliminary and will not be, you will not be strictly held to them. There is room for these to fluctuate between categories, but your overall budget would remain the same. So, we come to these numbers using current bid estimates provided by contractors through the public market, and then apply contingencies for the general inflation and escalation that we know prices just unfortunately will not stay the same on us, as well as some pretty healthy contingencies for bid costs in case numbers start to come in strange, if there's a concrete shortage, any of those things that might bump a price higher or lower any given year, we try to account for and give you lots of padding within these. They're also, you'll also notice they are rounded to the nearest 100th. That is a state requirement, but also just allows us to give you just a little bit more breathing room, knowing that we aren't ready to build this today. So with that, we're estimating about 134,000 for the main shelter, about 742,800 for the playground, which is very healthy for a community park budget, about 132,000 for the pickleball courts and to renovate that adjacent shelter, about 27,200 for the basketball color coding. We also know that there will be some landscape improvements, turf restoration. There's so many beautiful mature trees that we're going to be prioritizing maintaining, but opportunity to add understory plantings as well, so reserving costs for that, as well as just protecting the site and the other requirements for fencing that needed to be done to make sure the construction site stays safe, about 57,600. And then those bottom two items are CPA reporting is a grant requirement that at the end of your project, a certified public accountant review the documents. That is our guess at their fees. We hope we're high on that one, but we've seen those rise too, unfortunately. And finally, your fees just to do the final design and engineering and make sure everything's ready to go out and be constructed. And so I apologize for covering the most important part, but that leaves us at a total grant project cost of 1.2 million, that being the full 50-50 allowable match with the assumption that half of that would be contributed by the state of Illinois. So with that, talk very briefly about the schedule. So obviously, we are here with you tonight to introduce the project and also to touch on one more important item, looking ahead towards the 21st at your next meeting, which is the resolution of authorization. What we would like to do is answer any of your questions here tonight, make sure that you're confident in this program moving forward, and then have your recommendation to approve this resolution, which commits funding to the project should the grant be awarded at your upcoming meeting. Assuming that all goes well, we will be submitting the grant on the 31st of this month, so right around the corner. And then there's a pretty lengthy administrative review period. Historically, we typically see an announcement being made in the winter of 2024. It's been January in the past, but it has also extended past that. We really just won't know until they tell us. After that, there is a requirement before any bidding construction that the IDNR and the city enter into a formal contract. That said, other work like the design, the engineering, that can begin ahead of that, so if there is a hurry or a specific deadline that you would like to meet internally, that can be advanced as long as that bid waits until you're under contract. That said, we do anticipate final design starting no later than the summer of 2024, with the ability to send this out for a public bid in the fall of 2024, and then start the construction as soon as possible, probably having to carry that over the winter and wrap up the fall and spring. The reason you see 2026 as that milestone is, once the contract is entered into with the state, you do have a two-year requirement to finish all work by that deadline. So that's why we are showing that longer span, just so that you see that you've got that extra room should you need it. So with that, I believe that is the very quick rundown, and I'd like to open it for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for a very informative presentation and a very exciting one. I think a lot of people have been thinking about Cerny Park for quite a while. Are there any questions, clarifications, comments? Alderman Lockett?
Just a couple of questions. So, for the grant, the max, that 50% that we could achieve is 600,000, correct?
So, the maximum the state will contribute is 600,000. You, as the local agency, could choose to fund more of it. That is your prerogative. That said, when we met with staff to begin talking about this design, we wanted to save a few elements for the future phase and try to pick them pretty strategically to both prioritize what's important to the community now, as well as leave some things that we think will also score well in the future. That said, if there's something that's, that you're passionate about, that's something we can talk about if you would want to chip in additional funds.
Okay, and then the design. Can this design change between now and construction?
Yes. The only limitation is that you have to provide the IDNR-approved elements in some equivalent capacity. So, your square footage might shrink a little bit up or down. You might move it to the complete opposite side of the park, but as long as you're still providing inclusive playground with areas for the two-to-five, five-to-12, and older range, and some of the elements for inclusivity we mentioned, they should approve that no problem.
So I would think that the community would really want the splash pad in Phase One. Just my opinion. We hear it a lot. Just what we need. And this is perfect because it's not a huge park. It's not a water park or anything like that. And I don't want to pretend like I know that it's easy to maintain, but it looks small on there. So it looks like it should be easy enough. But for me, I think that since this is mostly for, you know, kids to play, I would think that encompassing that, but again, not knowing, did you guys, by any chance, get any numbers on what that might be for the splash pad?
We can give rough estimates, but I can speak a little bit about the discussions we've had up to this point regarding the splash pad. Is, there is a pretty wide range of what splash pads can include. As you said, this is a relatively small footprint, and we've made some assumptions that we would definitely need to confirm with yourselves and should the Park District take this over in the future, them as the future maintainers of this property. There's basically two systems of splash pad. There's what's called drain-to-waste, where you pump in the potable water, it goes into the storm drain, drains off-site, and you're basically paying for that to run at a certain gallons-per-minute rate. Typically, those tend to be smaller. They tend to be a lot easier to maintain. They're a little bit cheaper to establish, but you're going to see that on your water bill year to year. The other, and so typically, so what we've shown is kind of assuming that. Those images we've shown would be typical of that drain-to-waste system, and we really wouldn't recommend doing anything more than 60 gallons-per-minute and really try to keep it as low as possible from a maintenance cost standpoint. The other alternative allows you to go much bigger. It's a recirculating system. That is, think of it just like a swimming pool. You would treat the water on-site. However, that is also regulated by the Illinois Department of Public Health, and with that comes requirements for indoor restrooms, indoor showers. And that is often, if you don't already have those on-site, a big deterrent for putting those systems in. And if you're interested in that, we can share, we have a little worksheet that takes the water bill rates and the anticipated gallons-per-minute, cost of buildings, and tries to figure out when your cost recovery would be. It's typically between 20 to 30 years. So those are all factors that we would really want to nail down very, very quickly. I mentioned the grant is coming due on the 31st, and we would like to have a really good idea of what's correct for the community, the size, the application, and what those numbers would be in time for that. The other factor to consider as well for the splash pad is, we've heard from several people, including the community, the hard water concerns within the city, and that can definitely be addressed through mechanical means and treatment before it goes through the system, but that's definitely an area that needs to be very thoroughly thought out so that we can assign the correct numbers to it. So all in all, this could be, depending on the size and the system, anywhere from 60,000 to hundreds of thousands of dollars. That might be more than you wanted, so thank you for bearing with me.
Yeah, just so we can evaluate it. I think it's important, just to look at the cost between the two. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions, anybody? Oh, Treasure Goodman?
Yes, I have a comment. Questions first. I'd like to second the chair. This was a very nice presentation. I would like to wordpick a little bit when you said that half of it is free. Half of it comes from the taxpayer from the city, and the other half comes from taxpayers from the state. My question is, to what extent you had good coordination with the Park District and if they've had an opportunity to review the grant?
Yes. So we've been in meetings with both the Park District and the city from the very start, from our initial kickoff, through every stage of design. Park District staff were also present at the community meeting that was held in July, and everything that we sent out document-wise has gone to both parties.
Okay, my second question is probably for the administrator. When you have a 50-50 grant, how does it work with overruns and underruns?
Could you, could you repeat the last part of that question?
When you have a 50-50 grant, the final cost is not going to be exactly 1.2 million. It's going to be a little more, a little less, or whatever. How does that work for the 50-50 part of it?
Yeah. So I can speak to that, and then if anyone else wants to weigh in. So, if you go under that amount, then you would just be asked to return whatever half of the equivalent is under budget back to the state. How the award, funding award actually works is you can either choose to receive 50% of your funding upfront, or you can choose to defer payment and just receive a total reimbursement at the end. So really, what would happen if you had an underage, if that's the right word, is you would just receive a smaller check at the end at your final reimbursement. If you were to go over, the IDNR would still only commit to that 600,000, and any overage would be the responsibility of the local match funding.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Director Kukler, could you clarify for folks the source of the 600,000 that would be coming from the city?
Our intent is to work with the Finance Department and figure out how much the park developer donations that the city's collected would be, are available to use toward it. And they are, some of those funds are already being used for the trailhead and some other things, so I've got to get a final calculation from Kevin. And if, if that isn't enough to cover it, then the CMRP, the park is part of the CMRP, so the shelter and the playground are all part of the CMRP, and we'd be CMRP funds to pay for it.
Okay, but the lion's share of the funds would be from developer donations, right?
Yep, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I just had a question. So, the 1.2 million is for both Phase One and Phase Two? We're just doing, is this, is the 1.2 million just for Phase One?
Just for Phase One.
Okay. And, but we don't have any estimates, or you don't have any estimates at this point, because it just depends on what decisions are made?
We've made, as I said, we've made some initial assumptions about the splash pad, and our best guess at this time for Phase Two is that would be close to a million again.
And that would be on, on the city to, there aren't any more grants for that?
You would be eligible to apply for the same program again.
Okay, all right. That's interesting. All right. And in all your discussions, did the topic of parking ever come up with all these new amenities in this park? Did anybody ever propose that maybe there's not enough parking? Did that come up at all, or did anybody think there wasn't enough?
I think we heard one question, very similar, if there is enough. Our assumption at this time is that, yes, there will be, because really, if you look at what's being added, there's, there's very few items being added to the park. It's really renovating what you have in place. So the playground is existing. The volleyball will go away, but pickleball will be added, so you aren't really gaining an amenity there. You're just swapping. The shelter, the basketball court will just be renovations in place. Really, the only new use would be the kind of outdoor lawn games like the bocce and the bags. However, those typically don't draw big driving crowds. Those tend to be more localized. However, those typically don't draw big driving crowds, those tend to be more localized use. So really, the only thing that we see attracting vehicles to the site would be perhaps the pickleball to a small extent, and then the splash pad being your biggest draw. That said, we understand that from day-to-day use, it typically, many spots open, and it's really only during your special events at the park where parking becomes a little bit more strained. But we don't think that these amenities would really change that use during those special events anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there aren't any more questions, could I have a motion and a second on what we're voting on?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution supporting and authorizing an application for an open space land acquisition and development grant from the Cerny Park Improvement Project Phase 1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Ashauer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to number two, construction of Route 59 multi-use path projects and next steps. I'd like to call on Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hockin for this issue.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Back in 2020, staff applied for surface transportation, or STP, funding. That would cover 75% of construction and construction engineering for this project. The city was awarded $770,000 of federal funding, and the local cost would be about $620,000 for all phases from engineering through construction. At this point in the project, our preliminary engineering consultant has provided preliminary engineering plans, design and analysis, an estimate of cost, and during that analysis and review, it was identified that the costs have significantly increased. A few of the reasons for these cost increases include general costs of construction since the grant was submitted. IDOT is requiring a culvert under Route 59 to be increased in size to prevent flooding from occurring on the west side of Route 59, as well as some pedestrian signal upgrades at both of the intersections of Batavia and 59, and Continental and 59 for this additional pass. The project costs are significantly enough that the grant will only cover a small portion of the project costs, resulting in an increase of local costs by approximately three times the amount of what we had originally envisioned for this project. Obviously, this is not physically responsible to continue on with the project at this point, so we would like the City Council to make decisions on, and based upon the recommendations from staff as outlined in the memo and the backup materials. As I said, we are currently in preliminary engineering design, we're about 80% done. We're waiting for a few of the IDOT geometry engineers to complete their review. Our next step would be to do a public meeting based upon the design at this current time. The design includes a 10-foot path on the west side and a 5-foot sidewalk on the east side. The reason for this, because the east side of Route 59, specifically near Walgreens, is very narrow, there's not a lot of room in that area for a 10-foot path. It would require a lot of reconstruction in that area, easements on former Walgreens, and if we can at least have a path on one side that will provide bikers and other users could use the west side for those means, but also provide a sidewalk on the east side so residents from Winchester could access, you know, the commercial areas at Batavia and 59, or, you know, go south to Continental as well, and access the path at Continental. So that's essentially where the design is right now, and we're working towards, after the public meeting, that should occur this fall. We would be submitting to IDOT for their final review and approval of what we call the project development report, which outlines the scope of the project and is IDOT's approval before moving into final construction and final engineering and construction bid documents. So staff recommends the City Council direct staff to continue on with preliminary engineering, it's already in our budget. We've been working towards that PDR report, so continuing on that to get approval from IDOT for that preliminary engineering Phase 1. There is a letter also in the attachments that asking IDOT to help fund part of the project specifically related to the items that they have asked the city to include in this project. The letter is in backup material, it would be signed by the mayor. And then, most importantly, we would reapply for STP funding, knowing now what the estimate of construction cost is, so that we would get 75% of this new construction cost paid for using federal funding. STP funding, the application is opening up in October of this year, and that would, similar to the current funding that we have, cover construction, construction engineering costs, 75-25. We also have the opportunity to apply for ITEP funding. ITEP funding covers more of the project, so STP is just construction, construction engineering. ITEP would cover final engineering costs, construction, construction engineering at 80-20, as well as any easement acquisition costs at 50-50 ratio. So ideally, that would be the funding mechanism that we could use, but we're going to apply for both and hope, obviously, that we get one. If we get both, ITEP funding would be our preferred funding source. So that's another recommendation in the memo. We've also discussed, Public Works Director Phil Kukler and I have discussed with Financial Director Dahlstrand about where this additional local funding would come from. If we just got STP funding, we would need, right now, we have, like I said, $600,000 coming from the local side of things. If we just got the STP funding, that would increase to 1.2, even if we got the additional grant funding. If we got the ITEP funding, the local cost would remain about the same. So we discussed it with Director Dahlstrand, and he stated that if we just had the STP funding, that the general fund, which is where the former special projects money is now residing in, would have enough funding for this additional $600,000. With that, I would take any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Thank you. That's complicated, that's a little scary, but it sounds like you have a plan. So here we go, with some of the things that we do best, those grants. So anyway, thank you for explaining all that so well.
Yep.
Could I have a motion on the item that we are voting on?
I'd like to make a motion, City Council direct staff to proceed with the next steps detailed in the August 7, 2023 staff memorandum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lockett, a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consideration of city code modification to create a four-way stop at Warren Avenue and Forest View Avenue South. I call on Public Works Director Phil Kukler to provide details. Thank you.
Thank you. Residents recently expressed concerns to both Alderman Ashauer and Alderman Lockett about the pedestrian safety at the intersection of Warren Avenue and Forest Avenue South. The intersection currently is a two-way stop with Warren Avenue traffic stopping for Forest View. Kids walking to Bauer School cross Forest View, which is not controlled by stop signs right now. The Police Department performed a traffic study earlier this year, and as a result of that traffic study, both the Police Department and Public Works Department are recommending making that intersection a four-way stop. And that's really about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, anybody? Alderman Wider.
Yeah, I agree with this proposal, and I just am concerned that we look at other parts of town too, and see whether there might be similar circumstances where safety could be improved either by stop signs or some other means. It just seems like after the discussions we had regarding the number of people that, you know, speed through our community, and the number of state highways and county highways, I think it would be good as a total process to look at the entire city to see whether there's areas where we can slow the cut-through traffic down and have drivers become more responsible, as they're, you know, following their GPS and finding shortcuts to get from here to there. So I just wonder whether this could be an identifiable program at some point in a future fiscal year, or through some other means of evaluation. And I do thank the Aldermen for bringing this forward and recognizing the situation, and I think it's a good solution.
I do want to point out, the stop signs are not used for speed control. I mean, people are still going to speed, but if there's people speeding down here now, they'll continue to speed. What the stop signs do in this case is, we've got kids crossing Forest View Avenue with a stop sign, there are people having to stop at the intersection and see the kids rather than just blowing through. And ultimately, if there is speeding out here, even after the four-way stop is in place, the Police Department's going to have to get out there and do some targeted enforcement. That's what really slows people down. And we do hear periodically from residents in different neighborhoods where they either want a stop sign or want a slower speed limit or something, or they have a variety of things they request. And we work with the Police Department to, one, to get out there and do traffic counts, which they also record the speed of traffic going through there. And very often, traffic isn't speeding through a lot of these neighborhoods. I mean, when you're standing on a street or next to a street, and somebody's driving by at 27 miles an hour, it does seem fast. But then there are some that do, where there is speeding, we're working with the Police Department to, I think the Warrenville Lakes, Timber Creek area has some speeding that was really surprising, and we've worked with them to get some targeted enforcement out there.
I do recognize that independent stop signs don't have an effect on speeders, but I noticed in Downers Grove, there was a cut-through street, it was, I think it's Curtis, where they put in a series of stop signs, and they also put in like medians that, you know, made the road a little bit more difficult, a little narrower, and a little more difficult to drive through at a high rate of speed. So in that case, I think the average speed dropped from what it would be, because they didn't just drop in one stop sign, they dropped in a series of traffic control systems that were designed to slow that cut-through traffic down. So I think if, you know, sometimes if you engineer things differently, it can actually slow traffic down, and how can a stop sign or a series of stop signs not drop the average speed? I just, I just find that that's an impossible situation to have, unless people are speeding up after the stop sign to make up. But they would have to, if they came to a complete stop, they would have to really accelerate in order to maintain the average.
Well, it's not the average, though. I mean, if they speed up faster than they would have been going, faster than the average after that, to make up the time. Stop signs have to be warranted, there are, you have to follow the manual and uniform traffic control devices, which have requirements for how you evaluate stop signs, and there is some engineering judgment for certain situations, but I'd have to look at Downers Grove and Curtis and see what was done there. That sounds like a more comprehensive look at an area that might have been really, might have really needed it, I don't know. I don't know that there's anything like that in Warrenville. I mean, most of our streets are fairly low volume, and you don't have that, probably that same volume that Street in Downers Grove does. But we do respond, as people bring these up, and whether it be elected officials, residents, Plan Commission members, we do look into these as they bring up concerns, and work with the Police Department to evaluate them and if need be, make a change.
All right, thank you.
If I can add on to that, I actually live just south of the street, it's called Prairie, Prairie in Downers Grove, but majority of the reason, it's similar to why there's a stop sign here for this item, was schoolchildren cross the road to try to get, my kids try to get to the other side, and so that's, stop signs were to slow down traffic, because there were no stop signs, but also because there was a lot of pedestrian traffic crossing the street for, during school days, and just to get to parks and et cetera, just like this item. So, so yeah, it's multiple reasons, obviously. They did a full traffic study, I do know that, for that one.
Did they drop the speed limit along there too?
They did. It's 25, it was 30, so they dropped it five miles per hour, but there are people, obviously, that still speed on there. And it is true, when between stop signs, people do speed up. I see that, I see that when I'm, myself, I'm driving on there, and I see people behind me, just like trying to get me to keep going. I just like, yeah, just, it just happens, it's just people just trying to get through there. But there is a lot less traffic now, because people are trying to avoid using per, because of all the stop signs, and they just jump on Ogden that doesn't have any.
And, you know, I also read that, you know, when you drop the speed limit, the rate of survivability, should something unfortunate happen, if you have somebody that's driving at 35 miles an hour and a 35 mile an hour limit, their chances of survival are much less than if they're hit by a car going 25 or 30 miles an hour. So, thanks, I appreciate the fact that you're looking out at all the different areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, first, thank you guys very much for looking into it. You, the Police Department, setting up the traffic study, really appreciate it, and I'm sure there's so many residents that are very grateful for it, so thank you guys. The other thing, is the stop sign going to be a blinky one? Do we know?
It is not.
Can we get a blinky one? They seem to be more effective.
They seem to be effective along Warrenville Road for sure.
They seem to be way more effective.
The Warrenville Road was easier to do, because we have streetlights up and down Warrenville Road, so getting the source of electricity to it was much easier. I don't know, I'd have to look into.
Do they make solar blinky lights, or no?
They do have solar blinking lights, it just depends. I have, I'd have to look at the intersection, see what the, I don't think there are a lot of trees at the intersection, but trees and, you know, the time of year matter for the solar.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. So in the material that you provided, you're talking about kids walking to Bauer in this area, and you're also saying that the roads that cross Warren all have stop signs except Forest View South. So to Alderman Wider's point, maybe we have created a series of stop signs that could be of help, and it seems that would be one of the reasons I would vote for this. It seems like we're completing, making that walk a little safer with a stop sign at each cross street, so I just wanted to mention that. Anyone else have anything? Alderman Ashauer?
It's been kind of a long time coming, and it's a big deal to the parents in the area. We've heard from, not necessarily emails or anything like, but calls, and I'd see somebody in town, and lots and lots of comments, so I'm delighted, and I'm sure so are they. I think it's a big safety issue. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass an ordinance amending Section 5-4-2 of the Warrenville City Code regarding stop intersections.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Lockett, a second by Alderman Ashauer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to number four, consideration of resolution of OTRS Number 2, Final Engineering and Construction Services. Civil Engineer Christine Hockin? Oh, you're already up.
Yes, thank you. Here with me. Okay. Come on, click. Oh, I'm not sharing anything. Can you just hit my phone? Go ahead, X out at the top. Because I want to be generous. Sorry about that. My mom was calling me. There we go. All right. Just needed a little visual for everyone. And it's sharing, right? Share my screen, hold on. Okay. All right. Here we go. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. So today I'm just going to present an update on the OTRS Number Two project status and present the final engineering contract for the scope items that I'm going to describe. So right now in the OTRS project status, we are working with our environmental engineer, Terricon, to finalize the completion action report to identify the remediation areas that are shown here in this exhibit and that are hatched in red. The report is actually with the IPA right now under review. And once we get final approval from them, our consultant Terricon then will put together their own consultant contract for their type of construction oversight for this work. But right now, that is in pretty much the final stage, so that I'm not presenting that at this time. In addition, our preliminary engineering consultant ERA has completed their preliminary engineering analysis, which identified grading on the site, future areas of fill, because there's floodplain areas within about the eastern portion of this site and any comp storage. So if you fill in the floodplain, you have to provide one and a half times of that storage area in additional area to compensate for that. So they put together a preliminary engineering plan based upon the preferred site that was presented to city council in the past. We did the renderings, which were presented in the past to show what the site could look like. Obviously, what's shown here is just the gas station site. The rendering showed what the site could look like in the future. The idea for the construction that was outlined in the budget for this year is to accomplish the remediation. The Terricon is working with the IPA, which is identified in these areas with the red hatching. So remediation, as well as laying some of the foundation for making this site usable in the interim before we get a developer. So perhaps putting some pop-up stands of local businesses or adding some, putting some food trucks on here for local events. The opportunity for this site is endless. And we would work with staff and obviously the council to determine exactly what we would want on that site. But part of the construction will include kind of laying the foundation, including the drive aisles, which you see on the right side of this between the site and the hotels, as well as a drive aisle with some parking. My other PDF will show a little bit more. And it will also lay out the sidewalk along Warrenville Road and Batavia Road. Anything that's outside of the project limit, project boundary, which is shown by this dotted hatch line, is obviously in the right of way. So some of that work will be occurring in the next construction season. When I say some of that work, the parking along Batavia, we have to rework some of the curb along Warrenville Road. That will be occurring next year as part of the budget under the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan. So for this, I'll go to my next PDF, which is not in your pack up, but I thought that, I know there's a lot of color here, but I thought that this would kind of help outline everything that we're going to be doing as part of the scope for the project. So... You can still see the red hatching areas on the right side and the upper left-hand corner. Let me move this up to the top. So the idea would be to reconstruct the area adjacent to the hotels into a drive aisle and parking spaces. The area further along, past the main drive aisle through the site, would be overlaying of asphalt, just two or three inches, depending on what's in there. The reason for reconstructing versus an overlay, the area that includes remediation area, IPA requires at least three inches of asphalt in there. So we want to make sure that this area is not only acceptable from the remediation standpoint, but also is acceptable from an actual drive aisle for the future of this site. So that usually requires about five inches of asphalt. So that's what I'm calling like a reconstruction, is five inches of asphalt. We would also, as part of this, construct the drive aisle into the site. And the reason for this is, and some of the parking in the middle, is to provide, like I said, for that interim condition, to kind of clean up the site, make it look like it's something, make it available for some parking for these potential city events, pop-up events, and lay the foundation and the groundwork for what this site could be when the developer comes in, when any developer comes in. As you can see, some of this reconstruction area is within the remediation area. These remediation areas are covered under our RLF grant that we have through the IPA. As you recall, this is a grant that we submit our costs to the IPA and then we have a payback period of about 10 years to pay back it over the life of the loan, with some forgivable amount to that loan as well. The areas in green would be seeded, so grass would be established in the areas in green. And then similar to this other area with overlay, the areas of remediation on the west side would have asphalt overlaid in this area. And the reason for that is we don't want to completely reconstruct that area because in the future, those are the areas, including this remaining existing, is where the actual buildings will be built. So a developer would come in and actually build the foundations and the buildings and some of the other amenities in this area on the site plan. But we have to remediate that area. So if we're going to have to replace the asphalt, let's put the minimum that's required under IPA, which is three inches of asphalt for those remediation areas. So the only area that would remain as existing because remediation is not required and it's going to be a future building pad is this small area near the front of Warrenville Road or near the front edge of Warrenville Road. It just doesn't make sense to replace the asphalt there with, you know, two inches of asphalt unless we have some additional funding or unless, you know, city council, once we get closer to the actual construction, would want something. But the scope right now is to remain as existing because it just, it doesn't make sense to put new asphalt in an area that already has asphalt. In black, I've identified the public works related project with the curb and gutter and the on-street parking on Batavia Road onto the west here. So the next step for this type of scope of work is to put together final engineering construction bid documents. And that is the contract that you see in the attachments in your agenda packet. It's a final engineering agreement with ERA. They did the preliminary engineering for the site and are capable of performing, obviously, the scope of work. The scope of work for our final engineering and why we need to get started now is because of the work in the floodplain. It requires stormwater management permit that needs to be reviewed, obviously internally. And also, we need to submit to the Army Corps of Engineers for any, there's no wetlands on the site, but because you're in a floodplain, they have to do some reviews as well with our comp storage basin and our outlet that will be going towards the river from that comp storage basin. That comp storage basin is in this green area to the north and northern part of our existing parcels to the north. So we need just to get the permitting started, getting our preliminary, or we already have the preliminary layout, so starting to get the grading and getting these construction documents put together so that we can go to bid in the spring of next year. So after that construction occurs, our environmental consultant will be with us for this entire period of time. After the construction occurs, Terricon will come back or during that construction, document everything and submit a final completion action report to the IPA. And the result we're trying to get to with this whole project is to get, it's called a no further remediation letter, so that we can market this property, knowing that we have this NFR letter to the developer, similar to what happened with Stafford Place, and get that RFP out there. That would be a next-year budget type of thing to do. But there's a lot of moving pieces. There's a lot of, lot of steps that we're trying to think about from all aspects of it. It includes a lot of different funding sources. I did mention the loan from the IPA. There are some areas of this, not the complete remediation areas. Those are the SRP, non-lust-related site. And contamination within this one to the left. There is some lust petroleum impacted soils in the area that used to have the canopy with the gas pumps. So that will be remediated and that cost can be submitted to the IPA for a 75% reimbursement back to us. So we'll have some of these costs paid by lust, very small. The rest will be SRP. Also, because this is going to be a park amenity to the north eventually and we will be using this green space for community events, this has to be confirmed with the attorney, but some of the parking spots in this area, as well as perhaps the parking aisle, because it's bringing people into this area to provide for open space amenity that we could use some of the park developer donations. Again, that won't be a lot, maybe 50 to 100 grand. It's not going to be a significant amount. And then the remaining would just be TIF, three types of expenses. There are some capital improvement projects funding related to the sidewalk on Warrenville Road, because there is an existing sidewalk there, but it would be increased to an eight-foot sidewalk instead of, I think it's currently a four or five-foot sidewalk over there. So it's a variety of different funding sources for this that have, that we've identified. And most of it's in the budget. The ones that aren't in the budget that we thought about, obviously, are the park developer donations. We have to discuss with Kevin and obviously Phil with the Surny Park application to see exactly where that all lies down. And then obviously the CMRP type of sidewalk improvements. So the request at hand is to to have support for the contract for the engineering, final engineering design with ERA and approve that contract. I'll take any questions on anything that I said.
Any questions? Alderman Lockett?
So we're basically going to get more designs done, get everything ready, kind of a turnkey thing for any kind of developer, anybody's coming in to look at this. And in the same time, we're going to make it pretty.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, Alderman Lockett?
Oh, who's, oh, Alderman Kruckenberg. Sorry, I'm not seeing his hand.
So how much of this constructed, new walks, new paving will have to be redone when the buildings go in?
So the only thing that will have to be essentially disturbed would be the areas in purple pink down in here and down in here. And then you see this, this is sidewalk in here and going across in here and back in here. That was identified in the preferred site plan. But a developer could come in and say, hey, you know, it makes more sense to make this a different shape or a different size. So it just, it doesn't make sense to actually install all of the sidewalk as identified in the site plan. It just makes sense to put in the sidewalk that makes sense right now. And to staff, it makes sense to put in the sidewalk along Warrenville Road and Batavia Road and even the sidewalk along these parking spaces on this side. Just, it provides a little bit of access like into these parking aisle areas over here as well. So, yeah, so it's only, you know, they would, they would have to do some work on the site. It's just, we're kind of laying the outline, I guess, of where they would be working in.
Thank you.
Mr. Pramal?
Thank you. I really like the idea of interim uses while we're waiting for the final development because that could be years off. It'd be nice to be able to use the site for community things in the interim. And I really appreciate the fact that you've put a lot of time and effort in your department in keeping this project moving along. A lot of interest in the community to see what's going to happen there. So I'm excited for the prospects and it sounds to me like it's in good hands. So thanks very much for your hard work.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is, this is very exciting to me. I mean, just when you said community event, you know, your ears perk up and all it takes is just one little comment and people go, okay, we're on the road. We're going forward. And also, it's refreshing to only vote on $42,000 instead of what we've been voting on all the years. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. City council passed a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Engineering Resources Associates Incorporated for final engineering and construction services relating to the Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lockett, a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, number five. Consideration of resolution for adoption of the DuPage County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And again, civil, senior civil engineer Christine Hawke.
Thank you very much. I'll just stay up here. So in 2018, the city adopted the former DuPage County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. It needs to be updated every five years. The work group convenes every year to make updates to the documents. But on the fifth year of this year, the work group was working with, the work group consists of all the municipalities that make up DuPage County, working with DuPage County, who was the author of the plan to make any updates that are required under the federal requirements for natural hazard mitigation plans. There were a number of items that were changed, goals that were added, that I included in the memo. It identifies different types of risks to the county, mitigation measures and projects for those risks, goals and action plans for each community and how the plan will be monitored and updated. So every community had to identify some projects that it would like to do, doesn't have to do. But identifying them in the plan helps if the community wants to apply for hazard mitigation funding in the future. It's good to identify it. It's a very broad description of a project. So for example, I'm not sure if anyone of you read the 400 document, page document. There's also a copy in the Alderman's office if you would like to see it. But some of the things that staff identified in the plan were mostly related to flooding along the rivers. So restoration, stream bank stabilization projects along the west branch. Again, this is very general, along the west branch, DuPage River, along Ferry Creek. There has been some areas that have identified as being eroded. Those are very complicated projects. Some of them are on HOA properties. Some of them are on individual residence property. It would be a pretty big project to undertake and we don't have anything in our, in our budget or plan to even tackle these. But it's good to, the authors of the plan, from the county's perspective, thought it would be good to identify them in the plan. Other communities identified other things. Most of them are all related to flooding. Flooding is one of the biggest hazards that we have in our community and in the county in addition to obviously tornadoes. In tornadoes, we have obviously backup generators and identified things like that that the city already has. But flooding was one area where we could potentially do some projects in the future. So the plan needs to be adopted by each agency, each municipality within the county in order to even be, even have the option of applying for this funding in the future if we were to do so. So there is a resolution in the packet that the city council has to pass to approve the adoption of the plan and also appoints myself to the work group. Like I said, every year we get together and we do any types of annual updates that need to occur. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Oh, Alderman Widener?
I just have a question about Ferry Creek. You mentioned it, that there's, you know, a number of HOAs that border it that, you know, we'd be working with. And I just wonder, long-term, is there any funding or anything that would be slated to, you know, do some restoration along those creeks? Because I know there's, you know, several residents that are interested in doing that. They believe their homeowners association might support. They believe their homeowners association might support some amount of clearing in order to get the water to express itself through our town a little faster and also to maybe reduce the amount of stagnant water that is evident after a flood event. And I just wonder what the prospects are long-term.
There is funding. It's, so the county has some water quality funding, so that includes stream bank stabilization because when, when you stabilize a creek, there's less erosion, so less soil that flows down the river. But in order, I think, to appropriately and give us the best position to get to that type of funding or any other type of state funding, the first step in this perhaps would be, if it's important enough in a future budget year, is to put together a, just like we do with planning documents for various parts of the city, a detailed stormwater management plan that identifies these areas, identifies, you know, the sources of funding, identifies the HOAs, you know, really prioritizes the areas that we want this work. I think laying down a plan, getting a consultant on board for something like that is the first step. I don't, you know, want to just apply for funding here and there without having that plan because I don't think that we would really have a lot of points when it comes to that if we don't have a good plan in place.
And we'd obviously probably go through a consultant for the development of that plan. And ballpark, can you give me a range of what the cost would be to figure a plan?
Yeah, I can't. I mean, it, it's probably in probably $100,000, I would guess, to put together a plan for the entire, because you're having to analyze, we have a lot of creeks and rivers and a major river that goes through the city. So it's not just like identifying it, it's doing some analysis, probably some calculations, some topo, you know, as, as you start getting through that, doing all the public meetings, you know, as you go through all that, it starts to add up. I know other communities in DuPage County have done it, but, so I could get some more, like harder numbers from the other communities, but that's kind of what I can think of off the top of my head, at least 100.
Are federal, state, county grants available at all for the, this kind of project or plan?
I'd have to look, yeah, I'd have to ask the county about that to see if there would be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I just, considering what's going on now in the tragedy of natural disasters in the United States, it just seems timely to me to know that there is, there are people working on, there's organizations, there's plans, people are trying to make things better, think of new things for the natural disasters that, that will befall us at some point or may or have a good chance of. And so I, I thank you for explaining it all. I actually didn't know we, we had this and we were part of this. So this was very informative to me and reassuring also. So, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, would someone like to make a motion on this issue? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to recommend, make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving the adoption of the 2023 DuPage County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and appointing civil engineer Hocking to the work group.
Second.
So we have a, a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Lockett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okeydoke. Number six. Consideration of Third Amendment to the Communication Site Lease Agreement with T-Mobile. And Public Works Director Phil Kukler?
Thank you. As you all are likely aware, the water tower on Country Bridge Drive is being painted right now. The T-Mobile temporarily relocated their, their equipment that is on the outside of the tower to a temporary tower that's on-site. They had, also had some equipment in the base of that water tower that they relocated to a vacant city building on the site. And that vacant building was where the former well number eight was, used to exist. It has since been abandoned. T-Mobile has requested to keep its equipment in that building long-term and take over maintenance of the building. Staff is supportive of that because we, the city doesn't have any more use for the building itself. That building is a more desirable location for their equipment than inside the tower. So staff supports T-Mobile's request. This third amendment that's in the, included with the agenda backup materials documents the change, and that's really about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions? I'm assuming that there's no financial change in what the lease is. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion on this item? Number six?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass an ordinance approving a third amendment to the site lease agreement with T-Mobile Central LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lockett, a second by Alderman Kruckenberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number seven. Consideration of Second Amendment to Communication Site Lease Agreement with Verizon. Again, Public Works Director Kukler, you're on.
Thank you. You may recall, the water tower on West Street, south of Deal Road in Cantera, was painted last year. As part of that, both Verizon and T-Mobile temporarily relocated their equipment to a temporary tower on-site. The equipment is still in the tower, the temporary tower. They're about to move it back. They discovered before they were going to move it back that the railing up on top of the tower where they connect their equipment to needed to be replaced after we painted, of course. So we're, this amendment is to document the new configuration up on top of the tower. There's no additional equipment. It's just a different configuration with a updated railing up there for them to connect to. City council did approve a similar amendment to T-Mobile's lease on the site for the same reason. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Bremel?
Do they have to make any substantial changes to the top of the tower? We finished painting it. If they make changes, are they going to restore things to the pristine condition that it is in?
Yes, they're actually contracting with Maguire Iron, who's our contractor who painted the tower. So Maguire is going to replace the railing and then fix the paint as needed.
And they're, they're going to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would someone like to make a motion on this item? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion and recommend the city council pass an ordinance approving a Second Amendment to the Communication Site Lease Agreement with Chicago SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Second.
A second, did Alderman Ashauer make? Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg, a second by Alderman Ashauer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our final item is review and file Public Works Department FY 2024 Work Program and Decision Package Status Report. This item is, is presented for informational purposes only. Is there any discussion, questions on this work plan? Okay, so we have one final motion, I believe, if someone would like to make that.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Kruckenberg and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Good evening. Thank you very much. Do I do this?